Let's come to order. The Plights tonight will be led by Mr. Grant Kelly.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one rich, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Consent agenda?
So moved.
Dewey? Was there a second?
I'll do Terry do first.
I'm not sure.
I'll do second.
Alright. Discussion. Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Uh, let's see...
Hey, I know Mr. Kelly asked us last night to track down some bid information on portables. Do you want that right now? Because it was on a consent agenda, I believe. Or do you want to do it during other discussions?
Let's do it. Let's let Mr. Crockett go and, uh, we have with us tonight Mr. Stony Crockett, who is the Mid Cumberland District Director for Tennessee School Boards Association. So, welcome, Mr. Crockett.
Mr. Chairman, board members and audience, it's great, great pleasure I'm here tonight to offer an award to you from ESBA, wishing to spotlight the outstanding board performance. Tennessee School Board Association created its Board of Distinction Award to recognize high standards of performance by a board as a whole. This award, one of TSBA's most prestigious, celebrates the achievements of those boards that have met the challenges of leadership in every area of the board's responsibility. It is, uh, hard to get this award and there are many factors and special requirements that are key in those areas are planning, policy, promotion, or development. These areas include such elements as creating a five-year plan, reviewing and maintaining your board policies, participating in TSBA district and state meetings, conducting self-evaluation of the board, and achieving and maintaining special levels of boardmanship points throughout the board and each member. As the requirements are extensive, not every board meets their requirements. Your board is among the select few. On behalf of Tennessee School Board Association Board of Directors, I would like to present to you the Board of Distinction Award to Rutherford County Board of Education. Congratulations to each of you. Good to you, Mr. Chair.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Crockett, was it my self-evaluation that put us over the top?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I think that's the part they degrade on the curve, actually. Mr. Crockett, thank you for coming. Appreciate you making the trip down and making that presentation. Uh, I don't see any visitors who have signed up to speak, so we're ready for number eight.
Uh, special courses request, district department requests permission to make an application to offer credit for special courses under the following guidelines. Rule 520-1-3- point 05-2A, local school system may offer special courses not listed in 520-1-3-point 06 on experimental basis. Mr. Education must approve each course in advance each year. After three years, the course may become permanent part of the local school program upon approval of the State Board of Education. Pardon me. After three years, special course request must be resubmitted if the teacher listed on the application changes. Recommend that you approve Rutherford County, make an application to new special courses to be offered to named schools in 2012. Thirteen has presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? We had some talk about this last night at the work session. Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Number nine.
Courses offered for credits in grades nine through twelve. Board of Education Policy 4.201 states in part, "A listing of courses offered for credit in grades nine through twelve will be approved annually by the board. Recommend that you approve the list of courses for credit in Rutherford County grades nine through twelve, 2013, uh, twelve through 2013," as presented. And we discussed that last night. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? That list is available under the tab for anybody who wants to see that.
I think it's important that we are taking a look at these on an annual basis and, uh, you know, the board has the opportunity to weigh in on this. Some of the courses that we saw in the previous motion, uh, eventually may come into this area after they've been there for three years and, and gone through the process. Uh, but I think that it's, it's significant for the board to approve these. Not every class is taught in every school, but these are the ones that we are, uh, are saying are appropriate in the school setting.
Thank you, Aaron. Other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Number ten.
Facilities. Uh, easement request in conjunction with the agreement between the Board of Education and Ammon Shriverman for the dedication of Bulldog Drive to town of Smyrna. An easement had been requested by Ms. Jean Bowlen, attorney for Ammon Shriverman, in the form attached. Attorney Bowlen indicates the easement is necessary to allow the process to begin for the closing of the property for the proposed development on the Shriverman property and construction of the new roadway along Bulldog Drive. We left that, left last night, uh, with indication there may be some development today, and I'd ask Mr. Jeffrey to step forward.
Yeah, we discussed this at land last night, the work session. Um, as you know, there's an issue with the existing Bulldog Drive, uh, which, uh, whenever the high school was first built, Smyrna High School, um, Bulldog Drive really never get finished away, or the planners sort of been contemplated, and by virtue of that, really half of Bulldog Drive exists on the school board property and half of it is on Mr. Shriverman's property. So the road as it exists today is half on school board property and half on Mr. Shriverman's property. Um, Mr. Shriverman's in the process of developing a portion of his property and brought up as the proposal for the board a couple of months ago that would rectify that situation and allow a new public road to be built and be dedicated along the existing Bulldog Drive that would of course give this Smyrna High School access to the road and hopefully improve the traffic issues with respect to the area there. And, uh, with that same agreement, he would add sidewalks to our side of the property and also donate, um, several acres to the Board of Education that could be used for future parking, stadium and other school uses. So, um, that was the agreement that came from the board a couple, a month and a half ago. Um, this last couple of weeks, uh, there's an additional easement being requested by Ms. Bowlen that they think they need for the project, and that is a proposed easement, which is a right-of-way easement between the Board of Education and the developer of the apartment complex. And, um, when the board did the agreement with Mr. Shriverman, basically incorporated all of the provisions that Mr. Shriverman had agreed to with respect to the dedication of the roads, such as building sidewalks, um, donating the property to the school, and other specific things in the road agreement, um, that were part of the agreement of Mr. Shriverman, but were not in the form of the easement agreement that was presented to us for consideration this week. I brought those matters to Ms. Jean Bowlen's attention, and, um, they have agreed basically to try to get those incorporated into the agreement with the new easement they're asking for. Um, so there was hope that that might be done by tonight. I did get a change from them late this afternoon. It did not quite incorporate everything that would need having incorporated into that agreement, so it's really not yet in final form, uh, to be approved yet. So I think the options before the board tonight are two. One, you could either, either have us bring it back to you when the agreement's finished, you can approve it then, or if you want to go ahead and, um, approve the proposed agreement with the contingency that it would incorporate the terms of the agreement with Mr. Shriverman into the agreement and subject to board turning approval, um, that would allow it going to get approved tonight. If the board would decline to do that, um, I think, uh, Ms. Bowlen and Mr. Shriverman will tell you this is a matter of urgency to them and they need to get this deal done as soon as possible, make sure the deal works, because they don't want to lose the developer of the apartment complex, who, uh, who is on short time span to get this project done and approved and funded with the bank. So there and there are time crunches, we'd like to get it done as soon as possible. So I think the options really before the board tonight are either to go ahead and either have us bring it back to you when it's finished in final form, or the board would decline to go ahead and approve the right-of-way to the proposed apartment developer, subject to incorporate the terms of the Shriverman agreement into that, that agreement and subject to board turning approval, that would allow you to go ahead and approve it tonight. So if you have any questions, we'll address it.
Wayne.
I think we have some time issues by getting the road completed and before the start of the school next year. I think that...
It would be, it would be a good idea to try to get the road finished before school starts in office.
Right.
Tim.
Well, I'll say in my year and a half on being on the board, Mr. Reed has certainly gained my respect and my confidence that, uh, I, I have every confidence if you get it to the point that he feels, uh, that it can be approved, I would be, I would be acceptable to making it on that contingency.
Okay.
Second. He made the motion?
I don't know. Was that a motion?
Didn't quite make it.
Uh, that was conversation, but I'll make it if, if we need to.
Okay. I thought that was where you were headed.
So your motion is to approve subject to Mr. Reed's ultimate signing authority?
You said it better than I did.
And granted, second to that. Jeff, are you comfortable with that?
I'll incorporate the terms of the Shriverman agreement into the new agreement. That'd be my, my goal.
And Ms. Bowlen, and is fine with that? I take it? Okay. Further discussion?
I don't know if I need to reiterate my statement from the last time, although this isn't with, uh, Dr. Shriverman, this is with the Rutherford County Housing LLC, so, but just in case, I'll reiterate my, my conflict statement that you put in the last minutes.
Other discussion? Mr. Gill, you're okay with this too? I take it?
Sure. Absolutely.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Thank you, Jeff. Best of luck. Mr. Shriverman, Ms. Bowlen, thank you. B.
Blackman High School Metal Storage Building. Uh, Principal Gil Vick has requested permission to construct a 12 by 16 metal storage building at the end of the softball field bullpen at Blackman High School. Blackman High will follow all that before codes and obtain that, will permit, storage building will be constructed at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board. Recommend that you approve construction of a 12 by 16 metal storage building at Blackman High School softball field at no cost to the board.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Another thing, we, we talked last night about some of the language that's typically in these requests. Another one is that, uh, our engineering department has taken a look at it and, and is comfortable with the design. Uh, we're comfortable?
We are.
Great.
Alright. Okay. Other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. C.
Principal Stephen Lewis has requested permission to construct a walking track on the campus of Rock Springs Elementary School. Track will be 200 meters in length, constructed of pervious concrete and funded by a grant from United Way with help from Middle Tennessee State University Concrete Department. Recommend that you approve construction of 200 feet pervious concrete walking track at Rock Springs Elementary at no cost to the board.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Do you all remember what pervious means? Okay, good. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted.
Just don't ask us.
Yeah, we're going on the honor system.
Yeah, okay.
I'm having a senior moment.
Eleven.
Financial matters. Uh, direct deposit for all employees. Rutherford County Finance Department is moving towards requiring direct deposit for all county and board employees paid by the courthouse. This change will be effective for all new employees beginning April the first, 2012, and for all existing employees beginning January the first, 2013. Interim employees may still get paper paychecks. For employees without a bank or credit union account, a Visa Pay Card will be issued through SunTrust Bank and their vendor, Skylight Financial. This Pay Card is a debit card that can be used without charge at all point ATMs, stores that accept credit, uh, pardon me, at debit cards and at banks that accept Visa cards. There is a charge for using SunTrust ATM. Skylight also offers paper checks that can be used at SunTrust Banks to withdraw all the available cash remaining on the employee's Pay Card. Our employees with these Pay Cards can even set up an automatic withdrawal for their recurring bills. We have looked at other Pay Card products in the past, but this is the first product we've seen with cost-free, uh, options for both employer and employee, and it's basically for information.
Do we sell employees without checking accounts? Like, I mean, not that we would know that information, I guess, but...
Well, we got about 600 that don't do direct deposit. Uh, I don't know if they, if that's because they don't have checking accounts or they just choose not to.
I'd say most choose not to.
Yeah.
Grant.
This is a substantial amount of time being saved from our employees and other people that have to deal with this and, and it's expensive. That's obviously a subfavors. So, I think, who does everybody take advantage of?
Okay. Annual policy review, uh, this month's section is section six. Any comments? We're also on the honor system that you're reviewing these diligently every month. Um, and anytime you had, it doesn't have to be during a meeting, let me just remind you, anytime you have an issue or question, uh, contact Angel. A general discussion. Mr. Gill, you had some information about...
Mr. Party, I know Mr. Kelly asked about portable costs and bids.
Mr. Gill requests bringing this information, as Mr. Grant brought up last night, uh, on concerning portable moves and cause of new portable, that type of thing. Uh, a double portable, and I gave everyone one, the double portable relocation costs approximately 15,200 dollars. That's including the moving, footing, uh, electrical hookup, deck, lumber and labor equipment. Uh, single classroom relocation of one of our existing portables is about 12,250 dollars. Purchasing a new, uh, double portable, uh, with portable, electrical hookup, the deck, lumber, laboring equipment is about 54,772 dollars. And then purchasing a new single portable, uh, is about 41,360 dollars total for the setup and everything. Uh, the next, uh, page that shows the bid that we received, we saw those earlier in the consent agenda. The next page, uh, in the report is where we moved last year, 2011, 2012, where they came from. The next page is just back up to that, and then the last page is the request that we have had, initial request, uh, for portable this year, which is around, uh, 25. Of course, we don't really have any available this year. We'll have a bunch next year, as Mr. Gill, uh, said last night, coming from the high school due to, uh, enrollment at the new high school. So, uh, this list will have to be modified and as their standard practice, which Mr. Gill set up over the years, that we get the initial quest, request, we review them, then we go back and see, uh, if we can get some off of the list to try to save money and not impact the budget for their...
Wayne.
The, uh, portables that are going from these schools to these other schools, uh, are they basically less crowded and they're going to have to make do? Or we just, we've been able to revamp the...
We, we did that vote for, for this school year that we're in now. And, and next year, we, we haven't really, uh, decided that we have any available. It looks like we don't have any available right now that would be moved from, uh, school to another school that's in need, because schools not reduced this year, or the needs not reduced in law school, like it is in a year that we're opening a new school.
So we made these, you made these changes prior to the...
We haven't, we haven't approved any portable moves yet for next year.
Oh, okay.
But if we do, we'll have to purchase some, and there may be a few at Eagleville that are, we'll be able to move, right?
At least, uh, four classrooms.
Yeah. And you know, we always, as part of our request, ask that they, you know, if there's a potential to give up a portable or two, that, to do that, so that we can refrain from buying new portables. Because like I said last night, it's about 70,000 for a double and 54 for a single. That's pretty good pop, you know? It's a teacher, they want to get me hired.
So despite our building program over the last few years, we've actually increased the total number of portables, haven't we? It was like 120 something, not too long ago.
You know, we, we had, seemed like we, I think since my tenure here, I think we've only had to buy about 10 portables, I believe.
That's what I remember, 10.
Yeah, that's correct.
You know, we picked up, what, 10,000 kids?
No, it wouldn't criticize. But I'm saying despite that amazing building program, we're still...
Yeah, yeah. And I didn't take it as criticism. I guess the point is that, you know, we've got buildings and also the principals utilize every square foot in the building, and just like Gary Holman suggested, that we, uh, build a wall and create a classroom in, uh, those middle schools. That's been, that's gonna be a good thing.
That is.
Saves us, what, three, aren't there? How many can we build per school? Three?
Well, we can, uh, there are room for three.
Yeah.
But to think about if we build a third one in there and need portable, then we lose part of our access to the outside, we have to be careful about that third one.
Yeah. How many do you anticipate when Stewart's Creek opens? How many will we lose?
Uh, well, Laverne...
It's a guess.
We should, we should. Let me, let me answer that for you. We should lose all the portables at Laverne, should lose them at Smyrna. We're gonna, uh, cascade kids from Riverdale back over to Blackman. We should, Blackman should use theirs. I think she requested a couple this year, I recall. And Tom's got, Rivya still got how many? 20?
19 is what it says here.
15? Yeah. So they've still got 20, so hopefully we'll clear a lot of those out. So you'll free up as many as 30 classrooms, I believe.
Could have 20 to 30.
Yeah.
But some of those portables, uh, the, they've diminished in their longevity. I'm not sure that all of them are going to be able to be utilized again, and that's not a bad thing.
Well, you're right, but sadly, uh, that's not a prerequisite to using them, whether they're in good shape or not. We just have to get by with them.
Yes, sir.
Gary as much goes in and, and paints them again and does roof work on them and like patches up insulation, whatever it takes to make them safe and usable. We've been doing that.
Yes, sir.
Grant.
We mentioned new high school. Has this extremely wet weather caused any particular problems or overall delay on, on opening?
Well, it's always, you know, the rain's always a problem on construction, but, uh, right now, uh, we're a few days off of our schedule, but we look to pick that up since we get some dry weather and rain.
Well, we were ahead earlier, because we got a good start, but, uh, of course, if we hadn't, we might have been in trouble, might we not?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you for this information. Very helpful. Any other questions on portables?
No, one additional, uh, I know Mr. Jurnigan, I forgot, I think it was Mr. Jurnigan asked about Riverdale Football Union use and what it is. It's a, it's a, a private business will be using it. Tom Dolan said it costs you a thousand dollars a day, which will go into the school account, and, uh, they're willing to pay it, so he was willing to recommend. We thought it was a good fundraiser for Riverdale.
I don't want to open up a can of worms, but I thought we said we weren't going to have for profit.
No, I don't think we said it has to... Angel?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
What's the, what's the for-profit rule with respect to facilities use? They have to pay.
They have to charge at least 150 dollars per day.
There you go.
Okay. Okay. Other discussion? Aaron.
We had, uh, tonight, the discussion about, uh, approving curriculum and, uh, the classes on a once-a-year basis and, and fulfill that obligation. We also have, uh, in the section six, uh, portion of the policy, uh, the student clubs and organizations. Right now, that stands as something that, uh, is approved by the principal in cooperation with faculty and student body representatives. I'm wondering, uh, myself if it may be appropriate for the board, uh, since those organizations are intended to complement the basic instructional program, if it may be appropriate for the board to, uh, to review those organizations. I'm not sure if it is or not, but, uh, I, I thought I'd bring that up in discussion.
You mean to approve whether or not they're allowable? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it, very much in the same way that the, uh, that the curriculum, uh, comes up, you know, it may or may not exist at every, uh, at every school, but it would not exist without board approval, uh, at any school. Uh, in the same way that we say that, uh, certain academic classes are appropriate, uh, at certain grade levels, uh, that we may, we may weigh in on that, again, in the spirit of, uh, complementing the basic instructional program.
Anybody have any thoughts on that?
You know, don't we really basically have two types of, of those programs? Because you have like Mu Alpha Theta, Beta Club, and, and those that, that have an academic base, and then you have some of the other clubs. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's hard to answer. I mean, you have a lot of academic clubs, you have a, yeah, a variety of, you know, we don't have really fraternities or sororities, so to speak, the, the way we think of them, but there are multiple clubs in the school. Uh, you know, personally, I trust the judgment of the principal. I don't think, the only, I, we don't, I've never gotten really a call from anyone questioning an offering at school. Uh, I personally would prefer to stay out of it, but again, I, it's just my thought.
Other thoughts?
Again, in general discussion, one other thing that, uh, is, uh, brought up in the section six of policy is, uh, the homeschool, uh, aspect and how we, uh, certainly, uh, comply with all state laws. There are two, uh, state laws that are currently under consideration. Uh, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Blair both were on the Hill. We discussed that last night, uh, but they went and, uh, weighed in on those things and made the effort to, uh, express our thoughts there, and the board has routinely, uh, had something to say about that. Uh, one that is under consideration and may come up is, uh, a law that would take away our right as a board to opt out of home educating students being a part of athletics. And, uh, that's something that is, uh, may come up, and, uh, our board made a decision in the past that it was not appropriate for those that are not enrolling in Rutherford County schools to participate in those things, and, uh, this could potentially take that decision away from our board. And so I wanted to kind of bring that up as well.
So then the state would decide? Is that what, I mean, the state would mandate one way or the other?
Well, I'm familiar with the bill. There's a bill in, in the House now that would, as Mr. Holliday said, that would basically allow, allow participation and, and would take the right of the board, uh, way to say, hey, no, you're not participating. I, I don't have the status of the bill right now. I guess it's a...
It's not out of committee.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and continuing on that thought is that the, uh, elected superintendent issue, you know, continues to bubble up each year, and, and each year has a little more push that goes with it. Uh, and the charter school, uh, issue continues to be pressed forward, not only nationally, but also from a state level, and, uh, and surprisingly, this voucher, uh, proposal continues to get a little, uh, push. And to me, that is extremely frightening, so, uh, I'm pleased that, that all of our board and, of course, Mr. Gill and the central office stays in touch with our legislators because, uh, they need to hear from us. They need, they have to hear from us or they'll, or they'll rock along.
Yeah, we can't assume that they know what we think.
That's right.
We learned that, was it last year with the, with the calendar bill, I think, is what that was?
Right.
And, and that's... They said, we never heard from you.
Yeah.
And so I think, I, I learned that lesson.
Well, and, and I've, I've made sure that I've upped my, uh, direct communication with Lee Harrell to make sure... to make sure that I can keep you informed because he can't hear from 900-something board members across the state, but he can, he can certainly hear from the board representative. So, I, I stay in touch with Lee just about daily now to make sure that if I need to give a call to arms for us to contact our local legislators to intercede and make sure they understand how this board feels.
As Mr. Blair said last night, we went to every office, every, you know, local office holders,
but they were either in committee or in session. And so, we tried our best to address some of those, including that. But that's just the way it worked out this time.
Sometimes talking to their staff is as beneficial as talking to them. So, and we did that.
Yeah, good. Other discussion? So, tomorrow night at 5 o'clock, we'll have the search committee meeting. Other than that, we are adjourned.